The Planning Commission meeting at...
Thank you. This is, excuse me. This is the Planning Commission meeting of August 25, 2025, at the Oregon City Hall. And we'll go ahead and call the roll. Here. I'm here. Here.
Here.
Very good. Thanks, Pete. Can we have the approval of the minutes? Has everybody taken a look at the minutes? And does anybody have any comments on that? Hearing none? Can I get a motion?
A motion or move to approve the minutes of June 9, 2025.
I second.
Okay, roll call.
For the minutes.
For the minutes. For the approval of the minutes. Yeah. Yeah, we had a motion to approve and a second.
Aye.
Oh, Pete, your mic needs to turn on. Oh.
Oh, sorry. I'll do that again. Commissioner LaSalle.
Aye.
Commissioner Schlagenhoffer.
Aye.
Commissioner Espy.
Aye.
Commissioner Minink.
Aye.
Okay, so the next item is we have public comments. Do we have any comments from the public? Hearing none, we will move to the next item, which is presentations. And I believe we have the 2025 Legislative Land Use Bills update.
Thank you, Chair Espy and Commissioners. Ms. Ryan, I'm Assistant City Attorney, and I'll be giving a presentation tonight, a high-level presentation, on the 2025 session's land use legislation, also going back in time a little bit to the 2024 legislation. Really just wanted to be here. The city attorney, Carrie Richter, and I have been, Carrie mostly, giving a similar presentation to the city commission and the historic review board, try to get everyone on the same page about some of the recent changes. I'm gonna go back a little bit to... First, I'm gonna try to do the slide.
One moment. We're trying to make it full screen.
Not a problem.
Otherwise, we'll advance it manually for you.
Okay.
Upon your command.
I'm gonna try it. Okay. Great. So I covered that slide already. So I'll be talking about Senate Bill 1537, which was a 2024 legislation, and then from 2025, Senate Bill 974, House Bill 2138, which is the big bill, 2258, and 3031. And at the end, I've included just a refresher on some of the public meetings law, law hot topics in the news. Okay, so if we can start with Senate Bill 1537. This is something that I've been working a lot with Christina on since I started. This bill requires that if a developer requests as part of an application for housing adjustments, also called waivers, to certain development standards, mainly design standards but also development, the city is required to grant those. But the law also allows cities to request an exemption to the mandatory exemption law by demonstrating that their current code procedures already allow waivers in a way that is not cumbersome. And so Christina worked extensively on submitting a very detailed application to the Housing Accountability and Production Office, which is referred to as the HAPO, which everyone is gonna get used to hearing about. And that was submitted at the end of July, I want to say, and it's under review now. We're hoping that it gets approved. The HAPO has been processing many, many exemption applications, and it really runs the gambit. Some are denied outright, some are approved with conditions, and some are fully approved. So we are gonna have to wait and see what happens on that. Also, please feel free to stop me with questions at any time. And for, if you don't know already, the HAPO, just give a little background. The HAPO is a joint venture that is housed within DLCD's budget, but it's a joint venture of DLCD and the Building Codes Division. Okay, now let's get to 2025 legislation. The first one I want to talk about is Senate Bill 974. And this legislation requires the city to waive design standards, very specifically described in the statute, including facade, materials, colors and patterns, roof decoration, form or materials, accessories, materials or finishes for entry doors or garages, window elements, fence type, design or finishes, ornaments, the size and design of porches, and something that requires a variety of design or floor plan, or front or backyard landscaping materials or vegetation. The list is, the legislation uses the word "including." It doesn't say "including but not limited to," but there is some legal question about whether this is an exclusive list, so I think that's something that's just gonna need to be worked out. We are planning, starting to get together with the planning department, Carrie and I are in September, to kind of take a deep dive into the code and figure out which code standards are gonna be subject to these Senate Bill 974. This, let me go ahead, go... You bet.
Sorry. I haven't been here in a while. I forgot to turn my mic on. A question about, let's just pick one, the fence.
Yeah.
Let's say the city of Oregon City has a design standard for fences. Would this completely overrule, override our design standards on fences? Like, they could put up an eight-foot fence, they could put up a barbed wire fence. I mean, what does this allow?
Well, that's a great question. And if it's a development proposal that this legislation applies to, it's a little bit unclear. Your example is a good one. Could they build a 13-foot fence? You know, probably that would be caught under a different standard, such as clear vision, or health and safety, or having, you know, super tall fences. Fences is not safe. But it's kind of an unknown. And where I think that we're gonna see this a lot is that... So the way the city's standards for garage orientation works, you have a menu of, depending on how, the location you want to site your garage, you can have, you have to pick like from six, or eight, or 10 different standards. But from that list of standards, and Christina and Pete, feel free to jump in, and Melissa, maybe seven of those standards are gonna be waived under this. So it's just an open question to us right now, and we're gonna have to sit down and figure out an approach to take that's consistent with the law about, does that mean that you're just, the developer is shoved into the remaining eight standards? Or do they have no standards that apply?
Yeah, the other question I have on the garage thing in particular is currently we get to, we dictate the number of elements on the front of the house based on how wide the garage is and how far in front of the house it sticks out. And this standard doesn't say anything about garage width or projection. It just talks about materials, finishes, or accessories. But if we're not gonna regulate those, what does that say about width and projection? And it's a bit silent on that, so, yeah.
I think the best thing to say is that this legislation in particular is not a model of clarity.
Well, but this only applies to new developments?
Some new developments. So some new developments, and I managed to switch to the next slide on my own. So it applies only to development proposals that are for more than 20 single-family or middle housing units, or an application for one or two housing units with a shared wall, floor, or ceiling. So I was so confused, I have to say, when I read the final legislation, and this is one of those pieces of legislation that did not get worked out. The language did not get worked out until maybe two days before session was over. It was really a question whether it was gonna pass and in what form. So I actually called the legislative council, who handles land use bills, and just said, "What are you doing? What does this even mean?" And I kind of laid it out for him, and he said, "I don't really know." So I do think that there is gonna be, I think that this is gonna present a lot of challenges for planning departments around the state. And, you know, I think the best approach for the city, probably for us, will be to just take a defensible approach and apply it consistently. And we're gonna have to see, you know, how it gets worked out. Similar to House Bill 2001, also not a model of clarity. You know, we've had to really struggle with some just unclear issues.
Victoria, you had a question?
Yes. So is this also gonna affect SHPO requirements? So...
Oh, so Historic Resources? Yes, it does apply. Yes.
It does apply. However, most of the work the Historic Review Board does relates to infill new construction in McLaughlin or Kenema, which are gonna be under 20 units. Usually it's a single-family homes, or maybe a duplex or triplex. So this is not applicable for that.
But not on an existing historic?
And if you are doing, like you're just adding a bedroom to an existing historic resource, that doesn't count, because this is for new dwelling units. And so there's the second bullet of the one to two housing units on a shared wall, floor, or ceiling, may be related to a mixed use. We're still trying to relate that. But from what we understand, the Historic Review Board will still be able to do their job as it relates to one-off infills in both historic districts. Thank you.
That was a really good question. Thanks, Christina. And my hope really is that in the 2026 session, someone takes another look at this and just cleans this particular piece of legislation up. One thing to note is it doesn't apply at all to more traditional development standards like setbacks, building height, fire standards. It also doesn't apply to GOAL V implementing standards, or GOAL VII natural hazards overlays, or the Blammer River Greenway. Okay, move to the next slide. Okay, the other neat thing that Senate Bill 974 does is it implements a shot clock for engineering, post-entitlement engineering and building permits. And it requires for post-entitlements that the city has to undertake a completeness review, which this is not correct. It's a 30-day completeness review. I had to go back and check. And for a long time during the legislative session, it was 14, but at the very end, it got changed to 30, which is not quite so hard stopping, I think, for your engineering department. Then there's 120-day deadline to complete all review once completeness is achieved. And the same is for the land use side of things. Failure to do that in 120 days allows a developer to file a mandamus proceeding.
Real quickly, there's a tolling piece. So when engineers send back their corrections, the clock stops. And then when corrections come back, the clock starts again.
So how it would work is, let's say an incomplete plan set comes in, and the engineering department takes a look and it says, "This is not complete." Well, they've done what they need to do in their 30 days, so that that part is checked off. The 120 days doesn't start until the complete application is submitted. And then if the city decides we need more information, which happens a lot on the engineering side, not the land use side, but there's a lot of, you know, stopping and starting and saying, "We need more information," that request for more information from the applicant would toll that 120 days. And it can also be extended, like on the land use side, for up to 245 days. That...
The engineering application is separate from the planning application?
Yeah, this would be completely separate.
That provision becomes operative on July 1, 2026, so we have a lot of time to work with engineering. And I think it'll be actually quite helpful for planning to explain sort of to the post-entitlement side, you know, here's how it works in practice. And we don't even have the tolling. So probably a little bit of like, "You're lucky." And then this is the kind of big one that will affect this planning commission is, there is a new kind of residential land use application called an urban housing application. And those are now processed essentially as type twos, and it's a zone change to allow for more dense development, a PUD, or a variance. The public notice is limited to 100 feet, and there's no initial public hearing anymore for those three types of applications. There's a 14-day comment period. The legislation allows for one appeal, and that'll be to the city commission. So the planning commission will no longer hold hearings on a zone change on those three bullets, a zone change for higher density, a PUD, or a variance. Yeah.
So the city is barred from notifying people beyond 100 feet?
Correct.
We couldn't voluntarily notify more?
That is right. It's not a minimum. It's, the legislation says that this is the only available way for the city to process these types of applications. Now, a question did come up at city commission. That's not to say that anyone else can't hear about it and show up and testify and achieve standing.
And we will still post and process it like we do all of them. We just, instead of a 300-foot buffer that we send the mailers out, we will have 100 feet. But when you click, when you click on the website, it'll be the same as the others.
Right, right. But if you think about a 100-foot circle, you know, and a 300-foot circle, I mean, that is, you're probably quadrupling the number of people that are notified.
Yeah.
It's gonna basically only notify the next-door neighbor.
Correct.
Or across the street, yeah. Okay, all right, thank you.
I forgot to say in the beginning, please don't shoot the messenger. That also becomes operative on July 1, 2026. I'm gonna move on to, so far, this is working great. Yes?
One more thing. Could the city put a sign in front of, like out up the street, in the planning strip? Can they... Can the, can the city put a public notice out there to drive by?
Yeah, so it'll still be posted?
It'll still be posted on the site.
Yes, it'll still be posted on the site.
Because that'll still attract a lot of attention.
Yeah, so we will go through our same process, except we will have a smaller set of mailing labels.
All right, cool, thanks.
Could we go back to that 14-day issue? Go back on the...
I'm going to do my best to go back. Yes.
What? I guess I need to know exactly what that means. Replaces the initial public hearing with a 14-day comment.
Okay, so right now, some, some applications are just processed by planning staff, like design review and subdivisions are, are subject to not, not, they're a discretionary hearing, only if someone files an appeal, essentially, or asks for a hearing. And now, this legislation adds these three kinds of hearings, which ordinarily would be subject to a mandatory public hearing before the Planning Commission. These three kinds are now really only subject to a 14-day comment period, and then the planning staff makes the initial decision. And if there's an appeal, there's one appeal hearing that's allowed, and it goes to the City Commission. Which I guess, you know, silver lining is it gives this body a lot more time to do long-range planning exercises and code amendments and things like that. Trying to look for the positives. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yeah, I guess I'm still a little concerned about just the 14 days.
Not, not, not very long?
Yeah, that's pretty restrictive. Especially when you consider the time between neighborhood association meetings in relation to when, when a, when a development would come up.
But as far as I know, this hasn't changed the requirement for a neighborhood association meeting, or is this, yeah, there's other ones that, like it's by land division, so you'll still be going through, meeting with the neighborhood association, so I, you know, this really is going to put a little bit more pressure on the neighborhood associations to monitor when land use applications come in.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, it doesn't, it's completely silent about changing neighborhood meeting regulations, so I would say silence means we don't have to do anything, we're not changing that. Yeah, I think you might be picking up a recurring theme in the legislation though here. Okay, so let's get to the big House Bill 2138, and as Carrie pointed out to the City Commission, that this legislation ended up being a mere 44 pages and 53 sections, which is about half as long as the last big omnibus bill, so I guess we're moving in the right direction. So I'll just tick through the main points. Again, this has 53 separate sections, and so we're giving you a high-level overview. First one is, there's no longer a traffic study or off-site exactions for middle housing developments for 12 or fewer units, or if the middle housing development lot was created within the last five years. So no more traffic studies or off-site exactions. Where an ADA-accessible Type A, which is a particular kind of ADA-accessible unit, which I think is wheelchair accessible, but I'm not sure, or affordable middle housing unit is proposed within a duplex or triplex, the city has to allow one additional unit creating a triplex or fourplex, so it's like a bonus unit here. And for townhouses, quadplexes, or cottage clusters, two bonus units are allowed. The next part addresses single-room occupancies, and in multifamily zones that allow five or more units, additional density is allowed for SROs and limited parking for SROs. This next one is probably going to be a pretty big deal. This particular provision doesn't take effect until January 1st, 2027, and I think that was, my guess is, time to allow for the inevitable lawsuits that are going to happen. This next provision voids all recorded CCRs that prohibit middle housing and manufactured housing before, during, or after. So it, it voids pre-existing CCRs.
So then that would mean that, that would completely void any neighborhood associations forming around any of those developments?
Not, it doesn't really affect the HOAs, I think is what you're asking, Chair?
I mean, usually CCNRs are, are, you know, create the framework for the establishment of the HOA.
Correct.
So you don't have CCNRs.
Well, you'll still have, they'll still have the CCNRs for like, you know, how long your trash can can be out, and keeping your lawn mowed to a certain length, but what, what the CCNRs cannot do is say, "No, you can't build a duplex on your lot," or "No, you can't build an ADU on your lot."
Yeah, and I was getting that, levying fees for maintenance and that kind of stuff for these, for these developments in the future.
Those are okay.
Okay.
It's just CCNRs that prohibit middle housing, so if it, if the CCNRs say, which many of them do, they say you're only allowed to build one dwelling on your, on your lot. That's, that's, this legislation voids that.
Okay.
Traditionally, the city has not, that's a private contract, and so this is not really something the city is going to get involved in, but it's going to come up.
Interesting. I'm going to ask a question about that. I live in a neighborhood that, we don't have an active homeowners association, but we do have CCNRs that say, "Single-family, you only have one house on the lot." Okay, no one's tearing a house down, but if someone were going to, and the neighborhood said, "Hey, our CCNRs say you cannot put a duplex in here," since the city isn't going to police this, would they have to go to, where would it go? Because are we going to change all the CCNRs for all the neighborhoods in the, in the city, or would the, the citizens have to go to court and, and then?
The second.
Who handles it? Okay.
So the, in that circumstance, the city would approve the application, and...
And then if the neighbors object to it, where?
Right.
Can you still sue the neighbor?
The HOA would probably have to go to Circuit Court and get a determination, try to challenge this law.
The Circuit Court would probably rule against the neighbors since this says they are allowed.
Unclear. There's a lot of unknown arguments, legal challenges, and there was a lot of testimony, a lot of testimony about this part of the legislation.
It gets muddy, yeah.
And so this actually bootstraps onto, the legislation two years ago prohibited this exact situation for CCNRs that were created after the legislation two years ago passed, and this now reaches back and voids pre-existing CCNRs. I actually was wondering if the planning department wants to weigh in on that one at all, or you just can't wait for that first, first application you get.
And, you know, we don't get involved in CCNRs, and so there's been times where an applicant has applied for something, and we've approved it because we are looking at our own code, and if a side private party wants to take them to court, that's a side issue, and that has happened before, and it really is two separate things. We can't, we can't regulate private CCNRs.
Yeah, when I see voids, I mean, that, it sounded, what it conveys to me is that it, it basically cancels out any CCNRs, but do they need to rewrite the CCNRs?
I see what you're saying.
Or the CCNRs just exist the way they were written, and it's just no longer enforceable?
I'm not sure, because I'm not an HOA. It's not my, it's not my wheelhouse.
We don't have an active HOA, so I don't think our, our covenants and restrictions will ever be modified, but if, if the state said we need to modify our restrictions now to remove that language, there's nobody in our neighborhood to even do that. So I guess it's just not going to be enforceable anymore. But do the neighbors have to be notified of that?
No.
All right, thank you.
I could talk for a while about this one, but we can, we can keep moving. So the next one, which is, you know, is within the city's wheelhouse, is tree removal codes related to housing must be clear and objective now. I don't, I haven't taken a look at that.
Our, our tree code is very clear and objective.
Clear and objective, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
I think you guys were way ahead of the game on that. And this is also a really consequential one, the last one. Middle housing land divisions are, have always been required to be processed as expedited land divisions, which are a different breed. They have to be processed within 63 days, which was the case before, but now, middle housing land divisions get no notice to anyone other than the applicant. So there's no 100 feet, there's no 50 feet, there's no zero feet. Okay. Yes?
Can you go back to the previous slide? I had one more question. I could, I could probably write these down, but I'll...
You haven't written them down?
Okay, no, I haven't written them down. Okay, the, the no-traffic study. If the development was created within the last five years, do we have any developments that haven't been developed, where the lots were created in the last five years that this would apply to? I mean, you can think of...
I'll probably, I think we, we, the way we process our middle housing land division, I, I don't think this is as applicable to us, and I'll explain real quickly. So a middle housing development on one lot, so an existing lot, they go through the building permit process, and we look at exactions for frontage improvements that are no more than 10% of the valuation of the project, which is the same process as single-family homes go. So we put middle housing in the same process as single-family. So that code does not look at off-site impacts for an individual lot. And so that's, they're, the way this housing bill is basically acknowledging what we already do, which is small infill, we can make you improve your frontage, but we are acknowledging the small amount of units, we're not going to make you go through an analysis to see if you need to upgrade a signal, you know, down the street, because we know it's not going to be proportional. So the way our code is, it is, we look at the frontage improvement, and we cap it at 10%. So the 12 units, that would be potentially if you had a vacant lot and they did a 12-unit cluster home. That would be one situation where people say, "Why didn't they do a, a traffic study?" Well, they're going through a building permit process for an infill lot, and so then there was no, there is no transportation for off-site improvements, just onsite frontage improvements.
Okay.
If you were doing a subdivision?
Yeah.
Then we will do, you know, a traffic study to see if there's off-site improvements required.
Okay, I was just making sure that where it says "or" if the development lot, they're talking about a single lot, not a...
I guess technically if there was a three-lot partition where you could get up to 12 lots total...
Because I don't see why it limits it to 12 after the "or."
Yes, so it's a little bit oddly written.
This isn't, this isn't the language of the bill. I mean, maybe the bill is a little more detailed.
No, it's not.
And I want to remind, there's two kind of traffic reports people turn in. There's the traffic analysis letter, which actually is part of the next application. That's a very simple one, because we already know you're not that big of a project, and you're not going to have a complicated traffic, traffic, transportation impact analysis. You're not looking at signals a mile down, you're not doing a, you know, really complicated trip. So middle housing will always be doing, would be doing a TAL at the most. We already are saying that they aren't doing off-site impact.
All right, all right.
So we already are working within this concept.
All right, just making sure there's not some way where a 100-lot development could sneak into that without a traffic study. Okay, we're solid there? All right, good enough for me. Thank you.
Okay, House Bill 2138 also directs LCDC to adopt rules, and they've got some time, they've got two years to do it, that eliminate siting and design standards that prevent or discourage manufactured site-built or prefabricated housing. There is a real push in the state to get some prefabricated plans and codes implemented to speed up the development of housing. This is one of them. I think the most interesting thing here is the legislation requires LCDC to define the phrase unreasonable cost and delay that affects ADUs and SROs, and that is going to be really interesting, because that, that phrase has been around for a long, long time, since the St. Holland's policy. No one's ever defined it. I'll be really surprised if LCDC actually does that, because everybody here has been waiting for them to define some terms like rural and urban for about 42 years, but we'll see. Also incentivizes cottage clusters. Amend siting and design parameters for middle housing types. The other interesting one is, LCDC is supposed to amend the permissible discretionary criteria available on the alternative track, so as you probably know, right now, the city has a clear and objective path for housing development, but developers can opt in to a discretionary track if they want to do some things that aren't, just simply, they wouldn't gain approval under the clear and objective track. And that's your master plan, and is PUD or just master planning?
Yeah, and variance, I guess.
And variance. And so this looks like it's ratcheting down on some of the permissible things that the city can get creative about doing in the master plan and variance process. I guess that's a stay tuned. Develop a model SDC system, and estimating reasonable zone capacity for buildable lands, which again, I think is just making LCDC go back and take a close look at buildable lands inventories. So we'll all be keeping close watch on that rulemaking. 2258 is the next piece of legislation. We're going to move, move on from the big omnibus 2138 that will keep coming up for the rest of our lives till the next session, and move on to 2258. This is a peculiar piece of legislation that is requiring LCDC to adopt rules that require cities to approve applications for single-family, middle housing, and small multi-unit housing on lands on for residential use, essentially in spite of the comprehensive plan, the zoning code, or a statewide planning goal requirement. This directs LCDC and DAS, which is the state's Department of Administrative Service, who oversees the Building Codes Division, so it's another joint venture, LCDC and Building Codes, try to get housing built. This will hopefully result in pre-approved building plans that developers can just pick from and, and get their building built. This requires the rules to be adopted before January 1st, 2027, so LCDC is going to have a busy couple of years in addition to what they're already working on. And then this is good news. House Bill 3031 provides some infrastructure financing. It creates the infrastructure financing program to be used in, for transportation, water, wastewater, stormwater necessary to accommodate housing, but it's very high-density housing, at least 17 dwelling units per net residential acre. And the grants and forgivable loans are limited to very low-income, low-income, or moderate affordable housing. Okay, we're going to switch from housing and talk a little bit about recent developments in the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. Just a brief discussion about public meetings law. Some of you might have read the newspaper in the last couple of weeks, but there was another city in the metro area that got in a little bit of trouble for having, what was that called? The group text that the city part was on? Peacock or something like that? And they, they skated through because the complaint was filed after 30 days after it happened. But this is just a good reminder that public records include anything that contains information relating to the conduct of the public's business. It includes social media posts, texts, emails sent during a public meeting, even if they are personal, and also written notes. The other thing to flag is serial meetings, for reasons that are not very clear. The Oregon Government Ethics Commission, I've got it down some notes here. ODEC last year was put in charge of, has a... ODEC last year was put in charge of, has a wider scope of responsibility for enforcing public meetings laws than they previously had. And they have taken a fairly rigid approach to serial meetings and defining what is a prohibited serial meeting. The important thing to remember here is that electronic communications among a quorum or through an intermediary create a public meeting, even if they're not happening concurrently, like on the same email chain or the same text chain. If they're happening serially, that can still create a public meeting. Intent or knowledge of what is going on with your other commission members is not relevant in considering that. And also just to note that the penalty for violating the public meetings law can be up to 1,000 per violation, and for which a public official may be personally liable. Manley just wanted to say, if you have any question about this, Carrie and I are here to help. That's it for that. Do you all want to add anything? Hot off the presses?
I don't have anything to add. It's a lot for everybody to digest, including staff and builders and developers. We are, you know, we tailor our application forms to meet these housing-type needs, and we've spent a great deal of time doing that, and we're going to continue to do that to try to make the applications as clear as they can be for people. So, but it is a bit of a moving target, and look forward to diving deep into it with the city attorneys to figure out what we need to do now.
And I would say people have asked, starting September 30th, right? The first, there's some things that will just directly apply, you know, and we won't have time to change our code. Within the next month, we're working on a housing landing page that provides a lot of this information, and if you want to provide the waiver and process, you know, as we get a better handle of what's being expected, we may have a new legislative packet, but it's a little bit too early, so we're just kind of monitoring to see which things we will apply directly and when there's enough that we can package together for a legislative file, and when's the right time to do that.
I don't suppose there was any roundabout conversation about how this is affecting the implementation of all this stuff, you know, how it's going to affect city budgets, and, you know, additional FTEs and all that other good stuff that... Because it seems like, you know, a lot of this stuff is being handed down from the decision-maker to rank-and-file staff, and they're going to be, I think they're going to have a lot more to do with a lot of this stuff, and they're going to have to do it a lot more quickly. And I just hope that we're, you know, in your conversations with the city commission, that might not be a bad idea. It might save you some money on the legal aspects further down the line. Just saying. Thank you.
Chair SB, I hear you.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks very much. And I think this will be an ongoing conversation.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Yeah, keep reminding us, because it's a lot. Yeah. Can I move to take a quick five-minute break? Is that, you guys mind? Okay. Five-minute break. We'll meet back at 10 till. Is that okay? All right.
...by the City Commission and in the event of further appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient detail and accomplished and accompanied by statements or evidence allowing the city and all parties to respond, the issue will not be considered on appeal. Excuse me. In addition to participating orally or in writing and raising all the issues during the planning commission proceeding, the filing of an appeal must include the required fee. A city-recognized neighborhood association may request a waiver of an appeal fee subject to the requirements set forth in the municipal code 175190C5 and 175290C. In addition, failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond, the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Okay, so this, now we will go ahead and open the record for the GLUA 25031 and ZC 2501 zone change on 19763 Parrish Road. Now, we have to be unbiased about this, and I'll go ahead and go through each of the commissioners' comments to see if they've had any kind of ex parte contact or if they've visited the site. And we'll start with Bob LaSalle.
I have no conflict of interest, no bias, and no ex parte contact.
Commissioner Schlagener?
No bias, no ex parte contact, no conflicts of interest. I did not visit the site.
Commissioner Manning?
I do not have any bias nor conflict of interest.
Yep, no conflicts or bias.
Yep, conflicts or bias, and I did not look at the property.
Yeah, I didn't visit the property either. I've been by, you know, in past, you know, road trips down that road, but not recently, and no conflicts or bias. Okay, we'll go ahead and start with the presentation.
All right, thank you Chair, SBE Planning Commissioners. I have about 10 slides this evening, kind of going over the major points, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have, and we do have the applicant on Zoom afterwards so they can speak as well. Can you try the next slide? All right, so this is a zone change to, and that is reviewed under Chapter 17.68, and that's a criteria approval we're looking at this evening. Staff provided a draft report with findings in your agenda packet, and your, the report can be updated to incorporate any additional findings you may have tonight, and staff will forward these recommendations to the City Commission in their September meeting. Next slide. So this is a zone change from FU10, which is a county zone, to a city zone. The property is designated Low Density Residential, which has R6, R8, and R10 as zoning options. This property was initially annexed in 2016 as an emergency sewer annexation, and the applicant at that time chose not to rezone the property and retain the FU10 zoning, which actually is very common for folks who have a failing septic. Their goal is just to get sewer. That's kind of the pocketbook goal at that point, you know, they're adding the costs up and they just want to get that sewer hookup. So they're brought into the city, but they retain that county zone, and because there is no city zoning, it kind of freezes any development on their site. So even a building permit for an addition to their property, which is really how this all started, an applicant wishing to make an addition to their property, the city could not provide review because there's no city zoning. So really, the, any additional development on the site, even a building addition, requires a city zone. As part of the original 2016 annexation, there was a condition of approval that required the applicant to record a covenant that identified that the property was, still retained that county zoning. That unfortunately did not occur, so when the new owner purchased the property, she was unaware that the property was FU10 inside the city, did not have a city zone. So zoning the property this evening and the City Commission meeting in September will allow the applicant to move forward with their building addition plan. Next slide. Oh, actually, can you go back to the previous slide real quickly? So you can see here that the property is located in the city limits, and then you see on the right, this is the corner Parrish Road and Central Point Road. It is one single-family house on a little under an acre property. Next slide. This is the zoning map. This more clearly identifies that it has the FU10 zoning. There's, while it's still in the city, the three other rectangular parcels just to the north of it are still located in the county, and they have their FU10, but they are inside the urban growth boundary, so one day they will annex and be part of the city. Let's see. Next slide. So the applicant does not have a preference between R8 and R10, so tonight, staff is requesting direction from the Planning Commission, which recommendation you'll provide to the City Commission. There's kind of two ways to look at it, both reasonable options. You know, one, the property abuts R10, that's the light yellow, but across Central Point Road, which is a neighborhood collector, you'll see there's R8. So this could be, and the future three properties to the north that may one day develop, could be an R8 node at Central Point Road, or continue just acknowledging what the abutting properties are. The one interesting point with all the new regulations coming down with the state, with middle housing, there's not a lot of discernible difference between R8 and R10. You know, single-family duplex, triplex, quadplus, cluster homes are all allowed. So, you know, this is more of a policy direction from the Planning Commission, so as part of deliberations, you can have a conversation of what zoning you'd like to recommend. Once again, the applicant does not have a clear direction, and actually, staff doesn't have a clear direction. It really is kind of more of a policy on Planning Commission's end. Let's see. That's generally for that sign, so next slide. One thing that did come up as part of the public comment for this application is the property also did not move forward and annex into the Tri-City Sewer District. That was an additional requirement as part of the annexation that was caught by our friends at Wes, Eric Bertram. And so as part of this annex, as part of this zone change, a condition of approval was added that said, before any building permits could be picked up for development on the site, the applicant needs to have submitted, it's an administrative annexation, and it needs to be completed before a building permit is final. So we have connected the applicant up to Wes and Tri-City Sewer District, and I know they're moving forward with that. But that is, we do have a condition to close that loop and make sure that the applicant is part of the sewer district. They're connected to City Sewer, and they pay fees in, but they're not part of the sewer district, and that needs to be rectified. Next slide. So as part of a zone change application, you do need to do a transportation planning rule analysis to show that the transportation system is adequate to serve the zone. This was not done as part of the annexation, and so it's being done now. And as part of the submittal, the applicant did submit findings that rezoning the property to either R8 or R10 does not significantly affect the planned function of that area and level of service, and that any future development could be served. I like to think of these analyses for zone changes like a little bit of a stress test. So what we're looking at is what would be the highest potential use on the site based on the permitted uses in the zone? So you're just kind of, so we're looking at maybe, you know, would there be a four-lot subdivision with maybe a fourplex on each lot? Clearly, that's not going to happen anytime soon. This is a single-family house, it's going to stay there for a very long time, but this is a thought exercise. So we looked at what the potential kind of reasonable worst-case scenario would be for any future development, and it was found that it was well within our modeling, so which makes sense, this is a single lot, this is not a, you know, 20-acre parcel. So this is a single lot that one day will be developed, and it is well within our systems' modeling that, once again, improvements would just be relegated to just frontage improvements. We wouldn't be looking at any off-site impacts. The key thing, what I like to see with a stress test, is it really saying is, is the city's transportation system plan adequate? Or does the city need to revise and add more projects? Or is there a situation where a trip cap may be reasonable? And we've done that with much larger commercial properties, where we've either identified a new project that we need to adopt as a city to address any future impacts, or we said, well, you can do this development, but there is a cap on, you know, future trips until we come up with a future project. So in this situation, one unit, it met the stress test, it meets our modeling. So that's kind of overall why we do this analysis at the time of zone change, we're thinking, what would be the worst-case scenario, and do we need to address kind of plans now so when they actually apply for development, we have everything in place we need? Next slide. So staff recommends that this proposal moves through to the City Commission with either recommended R8 or R10 zoning designation. So this evening, you can have a discussion, talk to the applicant, and make your recommendation. Either tonight, you can deny the application, though you would need to provide me findings for that. The applicant has met, you know, generally all their requirements to show that they have sufficient utilities, both water, sewer, and transportation. And if you need any additional information from either staff or the applicant, you can do that as well. If the presentation, or if the application moves forward with a recommendation approval, it'll be heard at the September 17th City Commission meeting. So I'm available for any questions the Planning Commission may have.
I know I'm reading it wrong, and I just, I apologize.
Sure.
But page 18 of the applicant's submittal, the traffic memorandum, what is that saying?
So the, if you notice, the applicant submitted an incorrect transportation analysis, and I attached, I attached a revised version onto the agenda, if you see an exhibit with a revised version.
It's a major mistake. How did, how did that, why would they even attach it? It says it was annexed to Happy Valley.
Yeah, do you see, do you see the revised, if we go to the agenda?
But why, I know they changed it, but it just makes no sense that they, that's just a strange detail to just manifest.
I reached out to the applicant's transportation consultant, he realized he made a mistake, and he provided a revised version.
But we were comfortable with that traffic memorandum, even though it was...
The revised version, let me go on to the, I'm going to go on to the agenda.
I just can't understand how a traffic...
I think it was a grammatical, it was a mistake on his end, that incorrect work was sent out, we caught it, he revised it.
It's a strange mistake. It's almost like they took the, like they took a, a letter intended for someone else and just changed the address and submitted it again. I just, I can't understand how you could possibly type that wrong. It's like they, they...
Well, it was already, they used the boilerplate.
Right.
It was already in there.
Yeah, and they just changed the address. So do we still trust it? By our own?
Sorry, yeah.
Yes, speaking with our engineering staff, they review the transportation analysis letter, and they feel that it is adequate.
It still, it seems accurate.
So the numbers are related to here, not...
Yeah, the real numbers are related to here.
Okay, all right. Nomenclature. I hope he double reads it next time. All right, thank you.
Yeah, and actually, I have one more slide I wanted to, this is a bit of a postscript slide, so this is not necessarily related to this application, but I wanted to provide a postscript comment. We previously rezoned properties at the time of annexation and identified the lowest density zone as the automatic rezon, and we kind of packaged them all together. There was some findings that we needed, that that couldn't happen, that we needed to do the transportation planning rule analysis, and so we split it apart. And so people had to apply for an annexation, and they had to apply for the zone change. And what we see is, when you do an emergency annexation, money and time is so important, and it's always an unexpected expense. No one is expecting their septic tank to, you know, to fail. And so when presented options, most emergency annexation folks who don't have any plan to development, they don't pursue the zone change, because they just want to get their sewer hooked up. So we have parcels all over the city with these FU10 zones. And so I would like to reach out to the City Commission when this is presented in September and kind of see if they would support staff looking at some additional options, so when emergency annexations come in, they aren't kind of left with this FU10 zone that is just kind of holding out there.
One solution for that would be, well, there's like all sorts of different layers on this, but to ensure that an emergency sewer connector does all the other stuff that they need to do with the annexation would be an irrevocable consent to annex. So in other words, they fill, they, the city prepares, you know, a preset with conditions in that consent form that they annex, that they go through, whatever it is they need to go through with clean water services, or I mean, Tri-Cities, you know, all the other things that they need to do on that, on that annexation contract, and they file that with the annexation application.
Yeah, and we kind of have that, we require a complete and paid-for annexation at the time.
The city notarizes it and records it.
Yeah.
And the applicant comes in to sign it, but the city, not the applicant, records it.
Yeah.
And that way, it's with everything, and they know what it is they have to do, they've got the annexation application all filled out, and you could also make them fill out the application to join the district too.
Yeah.
And that could be all in one bundle.
Yeah, and I, I think that that works in the, if people want to stay FU10, but I think the larger pieces, we just have these odd FU10 parcels everywhere, is that good city policy? So there's, there's a bunch of questions involved in kind of the next step. So as part of the City Commission presentation, I'm going to ask if this is something they want staff to work on, and when we bring it back to you.
And then on the subject of preordained zoning, I think I am all for that. I think that that really makes a lot more sense to know what it is, you know, from a middle housing standpoint, buildable lands inventory, you know, you'll get a much more accurate depiction of what kind of property you have out there and what the developability of it is, if you know what the zonings are going to be in all, you know, to all, all the properties within the USB, you know, and, and maybe you could even work out an IGA with Tri-Cities, so that they don't have to keep, you know, taking in these applications, they could just do an IGA with you guys, and then you could just bring it into the district by ordinance each time you annex, instead of having them do this separate process to bring them into the district separately.
So there's, yeah, there's lots of pieces of this puzzle, and it's not going to be solved tonight, but I just, this is yet another example of what happens when you separate annexation zone.
Yeah, I, I think it needs to be bundled, and I won't say anything more about this policy stuff, because it's probably not appropriate, but I just had to do it.
Are there any costs or fees involved with this for the applicant?
Yeah, they had to pay for a zone change application, which was over $3,000.
Yeah.
Have they been paid?
Yeah, that has to be paid at the beginning of the submittal.
Yeah, I mean, either it goes, you know, either that goes part and parcel with the annexation and it gets approved by us, you know, for that fee, or it gets preordained and then it just gets dropped into the, onto the property. But, yeah, otherwise, yeah, otherwise you have this.
Yeah. So once again, this is all not related to this, but I want to just do a postscript slide, say that we are monitoring this, and it's something we're going to request to see if it can be a, you know, a work plan item.
Yeah, I totally support.
So I know the applicant is here and doesn't have a big presentation, but is available to really answer any questions the Planning Commission may have.
Anybody?
I'm going to turn the speaker on, maybe an echo. Okay, Brandy, can...
Hello?
Hello?
Does the applicant have a presentation?
Do you have anything you'd like to say, Brandy, or...
No, not really. It's, we bought the property in 2018, and we didn't know that it wasn't, and the annexation wasn't completed until we put in to try to connect a detached garage to our house, and then we found out we weren't zoned, and so we've just been trying to deal with the rezoning process that we were left to deal with, that we weren't notified about at the time of purchase.
Yeah, yeah, see, that's... Having this all bundled would alleviate all that, and the property, potential purchaser of the property would know what it is they're getting, what they're up against.
Okay, anything else Brandy'd like to say?
I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Melissa, would you go back to the slide that has the options for the Planning Commission? There we go.
So anybody want to start talking about the options between R10 and R8?
Well, I would. Just right off the top, recommend R10.
Okay.
I mean, because it's adjacent to R10, so it's all R10.
Mm-hmm, that's valid. Commissioner Schlagener, anything?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner LaSalle, if, if the neighborhood is R10, it should be R10.
Commissioner Manning?
I agree as well.
Well, I don't disagree, but part of me, you know, would say, yeah, I would say that it doesn't make any sense to have R8 when the R10 is contiguous, and, you know, you should really zone the property R10 sense, so that you keep all of the R10 zoning contiguous with all the other properties that are already zoned R10. On the other hand, we have all of this middle housing coming up, and doing the math, even though there isn't much of a difference, there's a little bit of a difference in that the R8, I think yields one more, one more lot. Could potentially yield one more lot, which would mean perhaps one more fourplex on a lot, or one more cluster house, or one more whatever. So I don't know if we are, I mean, it's really hard to predict what could be or base our findings on what could be or what doesn't really exist in the code. So I really have to kind of use the code as a, as a jumping off point at this point. And I think that there's more information that supports not doing non-contiguous zoning or not spot zoning, if I will, as opposed to, you know, the other way. So I, I think I have to agree with everybody on the R10 as well.
Well, and the applicant applied for R10.
Okay.
That's what she wanted.
That's fair enough, yeah. But I mean, I think I, I want to, I wanted to at least lay that out, because I think what we're looking at in the future is greater density in some of these areas that can carry it, you know, I mean, of course, we don't want to put, you know, high density out on the urban growth boundary, but where, you know, roadways can't serve it, but at the same time, we have to come up with enough buildable land to meet all of our state requirements, correct? Yeah, so that's, that's, that's a worry that I would have. So even though this is maybe just one lot difference, we're probably okay now, but I think we need to start thinking about that in the future, I guess. Motion or more discussion?
I remember us asking the city attorney whether the legislature's recent passage of bills affected the residential zoning, and she stated that, yes, it does, and in fact, residential zoning doesn't apply to anything anymore. So, I mean, it wouldn't matter whichever way we voted.
Yep, everything's been turned upside down, that's, that's right. Anybody else? Can I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve GLUA-25-031 and zoning change 25-0001 at the R10 density.
Very good, yeah.
I second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Commissioner Schlagener, seconded by Victoria Manning, and Bob LaSalle, Commissioner LaSalle?
Aye.
Okay, can we get a vote? Take the roll?
All right. Commissioner Schlagener?
Aye.
Commissioner LaSalle?
Aye.
Chair SBE?
Aye.
Commissioner Manning?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So this is a tentative decision, right, to be scheduled with the City Commission?
City Commission, yeah, September 17th. So we'll all forward your recommendation and your specific findings related to R10 in my presentation to the City Commission.
Great.
All right, that's all.
Thanks, Brandy. Oh, we still have stuff on the agenda, don't we? Right. So, yeah, we are looking at communications?
Sure. Don't have a whole lot. I'll tell you that we've been busy with residential permitting, as you might imagine, particularly with the Housing Authority in Clackamas County, and they have a 200-unit development that they're, that is funded through HUD and other grants. I think we are at about 60 permits under review right now, and expect another 140 in the next couple of months here for the Housing Authority, but it will take them some time to complete the infrastructure work that they're doing.
Where's that located, Pete?
It is right at the southern, well, I guess you would say the southwestern end of Holcombe Boulevard as you're coming into Park Place neighborhood.
Yep.
So it's the, on Gain Street and Aperson, and north of Holcombe, and then Sears Farm, which is the private Icon subdivision up there, the bend on Holcombe is also pretty busy with permitting as well, and we're seeing some duplex development up there as well. The city has applied for a grant from Department of Land Conservation and Development to do our housing capacity analysis, which we have to adopt by the end of 2027, and then the state's also requiring cities to do what's called a housing production strategy. Oregon City has not done yet, but several cities have, and that would fall on the tail end of that housing capacity analysis, and we're going to be using a state-supplied consultant, most likely, and the, that we've had Echo Northwest do housing capacity analysis for us in the past, and very likely, they would be doing the work on this one as well. But that's the housing production strategy, which could involve a variety of policies that Oregon, for Oregon City, has to be adopted by the end of 2028, I believe. So we'll be busy with that. Christina, do you have anything you wanted to add about the mill?
No. We'll find out about mandatory adjustments in September.
Mandatory adjustments, application.
Across all the digits that you have.
Yeah. And that's all I have to do.
Pete, do you want to make an announcement of a new staff member?
Oh, of course, sorry, this is so new, my head's spinning. So we do have a community development director who's accepted the position, that's Kelly Hart, and she is currently with City Lebanon. She was the panel's top choice, almost unanimously, I would say, yeah, which was great, we had a panel of six interviews and da-da. And so Kelly, I believe, will start October 2nd, so she has a lot of, she has to move, obviously, and find a spot up here in the metro area, and we're really looking forward to having her on board. She interviewed for the Assistant City Manager position, and I believe was the second choice, and it was a tough call on that one, too, so, you know, we're very lucky to be getting her back in Oregon City. And I really look forward to working with her and introducing her to you all and hitting the ground running.
Great job, you guys.
Thank you. Thanks for the reminder.
That's a lot. Is there anything else? Well, thanks, you guys, for putting, putting all this together. Really appreciate your great work.
Thank you.
And I'll move to adjourn.